Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Mayor Phil Seth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Six present.
So, welcome. Our first item on the agenda is a joint study session with the Palo Alto Youth Council. Welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. And do you have a presentation? You have the floor.
Good evening. Adam Howard, Senior Manager for the Recreation Department. So we are here with the Palo Alto Youth Council, so I'm only going to take a small moment, really just to thank you all very much for allowing this opportunity. It's a very unique experience for these kids, so I really do appreciate all of you taking the time to be here. And a special thank you to Councilmember Koo. Your presence over the year has been great, and I think you really had a positive impact on the students, so I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate that. And then I'll hand it over to Maggie Schoenholz, Team Program Specialist at the Mitchell Park Community Center. She oversees the Youth Council, and she'll get the presentation started, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Maggie. Before we get the presentation going, I just want to introduce the leadership or the officers. So to my left here, we have Alyssa, who's our president. We have Divya, who's our secretary, and we have Claire, who is our vice president. And we also have a few other members of the Palo Alto Youth Council seated here, and they will introduce themselves when they come up to speak on their slide. And so to start off, we want to talk about who we are and what the purpose of our Youth Council is. And so we are a council of around 15 teenagers from Palo Alto across the four different Palo Alto schools. And we are really trying to address the youth community's needs and really bring a voice and advocate for other teenagers. And we're also using funding to improve and connect with the youth community in various projects and events that we will explain later. And so we went over this again, but we have the members and officers on the slide, and the other members will be introducing themselves when they come up.
Okay. So hello, my name is Grant Cheng. I am a sophomore at Gunn High School, and I have two years of experience in the Palo Alto Youth Council. So throughout the year, we have had many events, and our first event was that of the Final Study Cram Slam. Throughout this event, we had two goals. One was to make sure that people who usually don't have access to resources and materials were able to have guidance and teaching materials that they could use throughout their studying. And we did so by inviting over mentors that people were able to have access to for free. The second goal was that of making sure that people weren't stressed, because we recognize that stress is a really big problem in the community. And in order to de-stress people and make sure that they weren't anxious while studying for the exams, we brought in therapy dogs that people had access to at all times in order to ensure that no one was stressed. And ultimately, this event was really, really successful. We had over 200 participants throughout the course of the Final Study Cram Slam, and we were able to provide satisfactory results by giving them free food, providing therapy dogs, as well as inviting mentors.
The second event we have put on is the Racing Hearts booth for the Palo Alto Youth Council. And so Racing Hearts is already an event that exists and raises money for more AED kits in other schools and other environments as well. But the Palo Alto Youth Council was able to have a very successful booth where we not only raised awareness about our organization, but we're able to hopefully recruit some new members to come and join us and overall have a support and kind of establish ourselves as part of the community in this really unifying event that occurred just a couple of weeks ago.
A few members of Faisal, OJ, nice to meet you. First year at Palo Alto Youth Council. I'm a junior at Palo Alto High School. So a few members of the Palo Alto Youth Council, including myself, released a vape survey to students at various high schools, mainly Gunn and Palo Alto High School. And our goal over here was to tell you guys what's going on with the team community and publicize the detrimental effects, hopefully later on. Our three main questions, we had to focus on why students are vaping, who's vaping, and so we know the amount. We said, our first question was asked, how often do you vape? Whilst about 65% said they do not vape, we still see 14.8% say they vape on a regular basis, and we see 14.8% say that they vape often. And our second question is, do you have friends that vape? We found around 65% of students said that they do have friends that vape, which was very worrisome. Even more worrisome was our next slide, and it shows how majority of the people list the reason as to why they vape, saying that they do it to relieve stress, and as a secondary reason as they do it because everyone else does it and it is cool.
Another one of the projects that we pursued this year was trying to create a database of different opportunities and experiences that students could look to for either summer plans or even just ways to get more involved in their community. And I know something that we realized that all teenagers have access to is the internet. Not everyone has a great college counselor at their school, they don't always have a great support system at home, but almost every child in this area has access to a computer where they can access an online resource. And so on our Youth Council website, we have advertised this website where we actually have different opportunities and the links where they can learn more about not only internships, but also volunteer opportunities and jobs that are hiring nearby so that students can be more informed and also engage further in their community as a whole.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jonathan Cow. I'm a junior at Palo Alto High School, and this is my third year on the Youth Council. And I'm going to be presenting to you guys the Maldon senior community visit, which is actually happening this Saturday. So what this visit is about is we wanted to establish bonds between youth and the elderly community, talk with the elders and play board games with them in an afternoon setting. And pretty much the main purpose of this event was to have several Youth Council members to get more involved in the community and to interact with elders. And so yeah, the event's happening this Saturday.
Hi, my name is Anshika. I'm a sophomore at Gunn High School, and this is my first year on the Youth Council. So one of our upcoming events later this month is Palo Palooza, which is our inaugural inter-school bonding event for all high schoolers in Palo Alto. And this event is a collaboration with the other teen leadership programs, which is the Teen Advisory Board and the Teen Arts Council.
Hi, my name is Amber. I'm a senior at Palo Alto High School, and this is my first year on Palo Alto Youth Council. And so during this event, we're going to have an open mic for student performers, including dance groups and also bands. And then we're also going to have some activities such as go in the dark graffiti and silent disco. We're also going to have food trucks, and we just hope that this event will bring in a wide variety of students.
Lastly, to talk about the reflections from this year, we have found that the events we have put on have really targeted the needs of our teen community. We've incorporated food, we've incorporated stress therapy, we've incorporated the things kids want to see in their community. And we found that our structure this year of hosting six smaller events rather than focusing on larger events that take more time and resources have been really effective in bringing out the teen community and continuously engaging them throughout the year. Additionally, we have started to collaborate with the Teen Advisory Board and even this year with Palo Palooza, the Teen Arts Council, to have this large event that not only is interdisciplinary between schools, it also combines the efforts of all these different teen youth groups in our area. And we also look forward to, we were trying to plan it this year, more engagement with the council, but we would love to do more activities coming up that have to do with engaging not only students with the council, but doing like fun activities. I know dodgeball may be a problem, but other different fun activities to really connect the council members to the teens in their community as well. All right, and so some future goals that we set moving forward with Palo Alto Youth Council. So the first thing that we said was, throughout the years, I think Palo Alto Youth Council has become slightly more event planning oriented. And so one of the goals that we want to pursue in the future is to have it more policy-based. So actually reaching out to the city council on a more regular basis, talking about the events that are being discussed at the board, trying to relay that to students and focusing on the issues. And the second thing we want to do is to have a better representation of teen voice. So we try to do this throughout the last two years by conducting surveys and coming to the city council, doing the study sessions. And we think we can improve on that by, you know, conducting even more surveys, you know, regularly checking in with the city council. And yeah, so to continue communication and probably on a more frequent basis. And one of the suggestions that we were thinking about or an idea we were playing with was this idea of like having like a student liaison or someone that could represent students at the city council meetings that happen, you know, bimonthly, is that the right, two times a month? I don't know what word that is. And so one idea we had was kind of similar to the way the student board, the school board functions, where they have like the student representative from Gunn and Pally. We were thinking about having a similar one, so someone from Palo's Youth Council, maybe we could cycle through all the members, would come and sit in and just take notes, even like relay what students are thinking about and then bring it back to the council. And then our final goal was to have better partnerships with the organizations in the area. So we kind of started this this year, and we've partnered with several organizations or at least had collab events. So there is the Area Youth Mentorship, there's the Canopy Club, the Next Generation Club, Rotary Club, and I can't pronounce that. Avenidas.
Hello, I'm Raj Shetty, and I'm a junior at Gunn. This is my first year on the Palo Alto Youth Council. So the last part in our presentation is support from the city council. We would love it if we could advertise our future events on the city website in order to gain more publicity. And we would also love it if we could get more support on providing venues for our future events. As mentioned before in our presentation, in the future, we're planning on doing a city council meet and greet type of event, so we'd love it if you could attend that as well. And lastly, our goals for next year, or one of our goals for next year is to have more ongoing communication with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to guess the answer is no here, but do we have any public speakers on this topic? Seeing no public speakers, we return to council. And Councilmember Koo, you want to lead us off here?
First, I want to say thank you very much for coming, and it's actually been a real joy joining you at your weekly meetings, and I can see how hard you work at it. And what is so amazing is that you work so fast also. You know, you come up with an idea, and next thing you know, you guys are kind of organizing, coordinating, and even getting it onto your presentation or into action. So it's very amazing hanging out with all of you. If I may ask Mayor, since they did the vaping survey, would it be possible for maybe Chief Johnson or our city manager to kind of give a little bit understanding about our ordinance, our vaping ordinance? Would that be possible?
Sure. When do you, when do you, August gentleman, want to take that one?
Well, actually, I hope Chief Johnson might be able to do that, because I am not, unfortunately, so I'm not really prepared, and I suspect maybe he wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quite revved up for that as well. My apologies for that. Oh, it's really a question of our vaping ordinance and how it might relate to the survey results that the Youth Council members presented. And I think certainly we're in ongoing conversation with the school district on how there are areas of mutual interest between the city and the school district. So this information is really helpful for us as we try to identify where we and the district can be most effective in addressing the issues.
Mostly, I wanted the youth to know that we, the city of Palo Alto, does have a vaping ordinance. I would have to bring you the ordinance to let you know a little bit more about, it's mostly got to do with distances away from certain, from schools or from hospitals. So it's more to do with, it has to be far away from location. Also, of course, I believe youth under 21 are not allowed to purchase any of these substances. And I think our program is actually administered by the county, so the county actually administers it. And I suppose if, I suppose we have to kind of develop this a little bit more to see how we can kind of help out at the schools as well, since vaping is not healthy for anybody. But besides that, I just want to say it's really been great working with all of you. So for those of you who are seniors, all the best wishes, and I am actually looking forward to do silent disco, you know, at your event, so I'll see you there. But thank you again for the opportunity to work with each and every one of you.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for coming tonight. It really is a pleasure to meet with you all and learn from you all, and thank you for this great presentation. Just before I forget, I think what's really important about the Palo Alto Youth Council from our perspective are things like this vaping survey that I know Councilmember Koo suggested. Up here, we don't know about that kind of stuff. We're just beyond that. So any information you can provide this council about things happening at the high schools or in the community among youth that has an impact on our city, like please let us know. So to that point, if you need volunteers, I am happy to volunteer at events, just shoot me an email, we're easy to find. And as for advertisements for your events and other issues or forums, please do reach out to our city manager or our chief communications officer. We should absolutely, absolutely be co-promoting the events with you. I guess, two quick questions. So one, I saw you have a budget of $5,000 from the city to host events. If you had doubled that or tripled that, what would you do? I guess is the first question. Happy to hear from anyone.
I think if we had more money, it would really depend on what our focus would be for the year, especially because a lot of our events right now is targeting problems that we're seeing right now in the community. And so, for example, with our latest event, which was Palo Palooza, we were really trying to get a lot of more inter-school bonding together, and so we had a large portion with that, but then we weren't able to put as much money into other projects that we would have liked to see. For example, if we wanted to have a mental health summit, we weren't able to have that. And these kind of ideas and like being able to distribute money across various events to target different problems is something that I personally would love to see in the future, instead of putting a lot of money into just one or two different events. And it is fortunate for us that we had a lot of events that were volunteer-based, and so we didn't need money for that. But for other projects that we do need money for, then we can expand our horizons.
Thank you.
Adding on to Alyssa, I think that especially for our Final Study Cram Slam, where we saw a really huge outcome from students and a huge increase in people participating in that event, the fact that there are mentors and tutors there was a really big sell, but we were able to get those mentors and tutors through volunteering. And so I could definitely see like a clinic in the future where we have, once a week, we could hire tutors to come and give free advice to kids, even about maybe college counseling. And that would be a way that I think students would definitely want to get involved and use that money for good. Another way that I can see the money being used is that it's obvious that surveys like the vaping survey are extremely helpful for council to get a sense of like what are the youth problems today. And sometimes filling out surveys is a little bit tedious, and I'm not sure if people want to do that. And so having incentives for people who fill out surveys might not be a bad idea in terms of like, maybe they enter a raffle when they fill out this really helpful survey to help the city council. So I can see how the surveys and both increased tutoring access could be good uses for the money.
Those are great ideas. Thank you so much. Just one last question I want to get into. Are there any students from Castelaya here? You both? So I guess I'll get into it. I want to dig into something just briefly. You may know Castelaya has proposed before the city to do some expansions in a new garage to support its growth. It's pretty contentious in the community, right? There are some folks who are super gung-ho about it, there are other folks who are really not supportive of multiple parts of it. And I'm just wondering, what do you see as students there? You know, what are you hearing from the administration? What do you see from neighbors, from your parents? Like, what's going on?
Well, I can say that I kind of feel a culture of fear, honestly, when it comes to it. I know a lot of Castelaya students, it's hard when you go to a school and all around you, you see signs that say, stop expanding, stop what you're doing. And I think Castelaya has done its own way of pushing back, but I think there's a divide between two groups, and I think that really humanizing the issue and talking about the students is really important. I know to me, as a student who's going to be there for a couple, I'm a sophomore, so I'll be there for a couple more years. And so I think at the heart of it is the lack of clear communication between neighbors and the Castelaya community, because from what I hear from both sides are two very valid arguments, but arguments that don't align with each other. It's almost like people are talking at each other, but not talking with each other in terms of the same information. And so I think what needs to happen is a really clear communication forum where people have the right sense of what's going to happen, and people have the right sense of what are the complaints that we need to address if that is going to happen. And sharing a little bit from the communication side, but just what I'm seeing as a student. Castelaya has a really small campus, and sometimes we don't have a lot of resources that I would have liked to see. And so I think a lot of the talk about on the Castelaya side was getting students these resources and getting, being able to facilitate girls' learning to the fullest. And so that is really the heart of what I see this issue is about. And so that's what I'm seeing as a student.
Thank you both so much, and thank you all for your service.
Councilmember DuBois. Allison. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth. Good evening. Thanks so much for being here. It looks like you've made a lot of progress since the last time you were all here. I remember watching that from at home. I just want to point out a few things that I was really happy to see is the inner-school connections. You know, there aren't a lot of places in the community that happens. Your group is one of them, and fostering them, I think is actually really important, especially just in this general time, right? Of things going on in the world, I think the more connections we can make within, I think that's super positive. I do love the idea of smaller events rather than one big one. So I think you've hit on, you know, a good option there. So the vaping thing, I have to say, really concerns me. And, you know, I still have teenagers not in the house, but they were, you know, one was at Gunn last year. And I wonder what you would like us to do? So you provided this survey, there certainly are some things we've done, there are things that other communities have done which are stronger. What are thoughts you have about what you would like us to do?
Right now, being in Palo Alto High School, where the, I don't know if you guys know this, but vaping is very common. School bathrooms are locked on a regular day basis during the school day to make sure students don't go inside. Fire alarms were triggered several times during the week. We even had a problem with eight times during the span of three weeks, fire alarms are being triggered. It's a very common thing. If you're a freshman, you have it. If you're a sophomore, you have it. If you're a junior, you're more likely to have it, and a senior is the same. Right now, vaping has a sense of it's harmless, it's not cigarettes, so it's better. It's flavored, so there's no problem. And I think that's a really big issue. Students don't really know the harm in it. It smells good and it tastes good. And also, I don't know if you guys know this, but you can get it at around two stores, I've heard, in Palo Alto without being ID'd, or any card can be pulled out and they'll accept that. And stuff like that, it's definitely a real problem. And I think if we publicize the detrimental effects, like we said in the presentation before, we can really get students knowing how bad this is for you. Yeah, and how bad this is for you. I would online, it stunts development, causes attention problems and whatnot. I told a couple of my friends who do it, and I told them that, and they were very surprised. One of them stopped, one of them slows down. Just getting that information out, I think is very crucial. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, I don't know about disco. If I'm willing to sign up for that, I'm definitely willing to sign up to come for meet and greets, and if there's no video, maybe I'd do the disco. But I do like the idea of you attending meetings, maybe and taking notes. You know, the League of Women Voters has that type of work as well, sort of. It shares information with all of you. So I think, I think that's definitely worth pursuing. And then a second thing is, Councilmember Koo and I serve on the City-School Liaison Meeting Board, and so that's once a month. So any of you who have a blocked schedule on Thursday mornings, if you don't start until 10:00 or so, you could come in person. You can speak during oral communications. That's the closest, I think, there is to real work than the council. Obviously, the staff does a lot of the work. And some of the things we're thinking about there are coverly, we have a super long list of things, but for example, vaping might be one of the ones we could, we could put on the list to discuss. But that's another opportunity for you to see where the city and the school connect. We've also discussed, and I'm glad you're already ahead of us on this, having it be not just with the PAUSD, but to have it be with all of the schools, right? We review emergency response plans, et cetera. I mean, we don't, they come and tell us that they have them, so. So I think that would be one other area where you could see connections that'd be an opportunity. So thank you so much for being here, and thanks for getting involved in, in politics. You'll probably be involved in politics your whole life, and that's a good thing.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so just want to thank all of you guys for coming here and being involved. I think it's really important. I think one of the challenges that a lot of cities, especially Palo Alto, is that a lot of, a lot of youth don't participate in politics. So this is great that you guys are getting involved, encourage your friends, this is awesome, so keep it up. I love the ideas you guys have here, the future goals. I think that I, for one, would like to hear more of the teen voice, so I think if you guys can, can do that, that'd be great. I think some of the channels that my colleagues mentioned make a lot of sense. But anything you guys could do to kind of make this, for us to hear the voice louder would be great, whether it be social media, whatever, whatever it takes. And I, for one, would participate in whatever programs you have, so just let me know, and I'll, I'll definitely do it. That's for the disco, I'm a terrible dancer, so I don't think, I don't think you want me doing that. But yeah, I definitely think that teens in the community should have a seat on the council, so I like that concept. I think it's a, it's a really nice concept to have. Now, the thing that I did kind of find alarming, actually, and I just wanted to ask the city manager about this, but I mean, could there really be two stores in Palo Alto selling vaping products to teens without carrying them? Because I would hope that we're actually enforcing this, because, you know, one of the functions of our city is to protect the youth, right? And I think that's important that we do that.
I would like to get further information on that offline, so happy to follow up. As Councilmember Koo pointed out, we do work with the county of Santa Clara that handles the retail prohibition ordinance, and so happy to follow up with them on that.
Okay. And I was just curious, if you were to guess, like, in the schools, how, what percentage of kids do you think vape? Is it like, you know, 1%? Is it like 10%? What's, what's, does anyone, and maybe it depends on which school you're at, but I'm just curious to know, like, what are we talking about? Like, what kind of problem is there?
I would say, knowing the kids I know in different friend groups, I'd say around 20 to 30% of students.
20, 30%, that's pretty high. So this is at Pally, right?
I would believe, yeah. I would believe around 20 or 30% of people at Pally vape. And 67% of them, I believe, is on the statistics, say they have friends that vape.
Okay. And what about, how about at Gunn? Does anyone know for Gunn what it's like?
I'm assuming probably the same number. I think though, like, the number drastically, like, there's a big difference between people that have tried it once or twice and like regularly do it. I think like if you're saying regularly do it, I think like that's like 5% or like...
From the results at Gunn, from what I've seen so far when I was reading through the survey, there are less people at Gunn that do it than at Pally.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
Okay. What about Castelaya?
I would say very low in terms of especially owning a vaping device, maybe like 10, 15%.
Okay. And so is vaping happening publicly? I mean, people, are people seeing the bathroom vaping away? Is that what's happening? Or like, okay, I've seen some nods. So is it, is it really obvious, and is there really no enforcement happening in the school? I mean, I'm kind of surprised.
I'm not over-exaggering when I say I will walk into a bathroom once a day and there will be one person or more vaping. If you go around and ask the school, the school knows about this, the school. And they're not doing anything about it. I mean, they are doing stuff about it, sorry, they're not doing anything about it. They're trying to enforce it the best way they can, but a device so small and device that doesn't smell like anything, and there are so many different of them, they go from this size to this size, that's kind of hard to enforce, even if you're a teacher over there. Yeah. And it's something you can charge to your computer, it's so accessible.
But it sounds like people aren't even trying to hide it, that's just, this is happening in the open?
They, they, maybe earlier on, a couple of years ago, they wouldn't try to hide it because most people didn't know where it was. But now teachers are more educated on what like vaping looks like and what the vaping devices look like as well. devices look like as well. So, no, they're trying to hide it. They go to bathrooms. That's definitely where they are, they're in bathrooms. And they're usually in groups as well. Yeah, it's a big problem.
So just out of curiosity, maybe it's a question for the city manager, or maybe Chief Johnson here. What, like, who's in charge of enforcing drug use in school? Like, who does that?
I didn't expect to be at the mic this evening, but, you know, that's what I get for stopping in. No, actually, I really appreciate the information I've been hearing, and I apologize for earlier. I just didn't hear what was being talked about at that particular moment. But I did pick up on the vaping concern, especially the establishments that may not be abiding by the county permit process. And even if they are abiding, the fact that they're selling to minors without asking for ID is concerning. We, the Palo Alto Police Department, do work with the Alcohol Beverage and Control Agency, sometimes through grants, and do regional operations. So this is something I can definitely look into to see when our next operation may be. And as the city manager said, it'd probably be insightful to know of some information of stores that may be selling, and those are things that we can look at and design our operations around. As far as the question specifically about drug use, that's another issue in itself, even though this would fall into that category somewhat. But again, law enforcement is typically responsible for drug use on a campus or anywhere within the community, so that would fall under our umbrella as well. And this is a conversation I've already sent to both my captains that we will continue to have and see about getting our SROs involved to see what we can do to help, so.
So do we actually enforce, like, trying to make sure that, you know, there's no open vaping going on, or people aren't doing drugs in the bathroom, or stuff like that? Are we actually trying to make sure that our youth are protected?
Yeah, I can't speak to that right now as far as the amount of time that the SROs are dedicating to that particular role. They have a lot of things that are going on. And I guarantee you, if that's an issue that's brought to their attention and needs to be addressed, we will address it. One of the things, you know, again, there was kind of two different ordinances that were maybe connected as far as the conversation earlier. There's a permitting one that we talked about as far as establishing establishments having to have a permit required to sell tobacco in their store. And then there's the other one that came up with the, you know, city ordinance that really is pretty comprehensive for the city of Palo Alto. And what people may not know is there is a penalty associated to that. If you are caught, starts at $250. So again, it's not a small amount of money that even a student could receive a citation for if they were caught violating the ordinance, so.
How many people were caught last year in schools?
I'm sorry, what?
How many people were caught last year in schools? Do you know?
I could get back to you on that. It is, again, this is something I would acknowledge I wasn't prepared to have that statistics for. So it's something I can look into to see if we cited anybody. Or even the city, or the school district may have to respond as far as administrative, assuming maybe they've contacted students on the campus. And how they deal with it administratively may be different than how we would deal with it.
I just want to ask the students this. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I actually just have, like, a quick -- so I was just, like, thinking about ways to kind of stop students from vaping as much. And I think part of it is telling them what, like, it's bad for them. But I think, like, at this age and where we're at, I don't think that's, like, the most effective way, to be honest. I think one of the ways that, I think Lydia Koo actually mentioned in our meetings, was telling them about the penalties and punishments that happen if you get caught. So I think, like, the $250 fine is something that most students don't know about. And I'm assuming, like, if you literally just had, like, a flyer posted on, like, a bathroom stall, that's like, oh, excuse me, if you get caught, you have to pay $250. Or something that, you know, tells them that there are greater consequences, or that it gets caught on their academic record, or something that tells them, like, I know, academic record. I think, like, yeah, like, telling them it's harmful for their bodies is -- it's been tried, and I don't think that it's worked, frankly.
Yeah, just to -- because I think that's an excellent idea, and I have no problem, and I know the city may want. But I'll commit to you that we are willing to work with you on developing a social media campaign or anything that we can do to help bring awareness to it.
I think that telling kids that it's harmful can actually be effective if it's brought about in the right way. For example, I think what Claire said, like, just saying it's harmful by itself would not be effective, but framing it in a way that is really potent. For example, I heard on Spotify once, like, an ad was like, one hour of hookah is equivalent to 100 cigarettes, and so you don't realize that. And so having some sort of comparison or having some sort of really powerful way to show what the detrimental effects are would be effective, I think.
So one other question I have for the students is, since we're on the use of drug, although it's not necessarily a hardcore drug vaping, but it's maybe a gateway drug. So I'm just curious for the students, do you guys see other drug use, like, maybe perhaps more dangerous substances? Do you guys see this much? Or is it, you know, just pretty much vaping and that's it? What do you -- and I realize I'm maybe talking to the very studious, very elite members of the student population, so maybe it's different.
I would note, as once upon a time, a high schooler myself, that you've now got these folks on camera, on tape, and so let's really not try to put them in a situation where they have to say something that could be played by peers. Honestly, I'd suspect it'd be good for us to shy away from that.
I just wanted to mention, I also spoke to Supervisor Joe Smith in, and he said the county actually has a lot of educational materials that they already developed. So the thing is how to get that to you so that you can take a look at it. And if we weren't so short on time and your exams are coming up and so forth, I would be arranging something for you. But that's another area to kind of look at, maybe partnering with the county and getting their health person to come out and show us how their education is -- can help out.
Hey Greg, I didn't want to -- I don't want to cut you off here. Were you still gone?
Well, you know, I am curious to know, right? And so maybe if you can't talk about it publicly, that's fine, but if it's in the nascently, I would love to know, because, you know, I think that making sure that we have environment for learning is really important, and, you know...
I think maybe, sir, with all due respect, I do agree with the city manager on this as far as those type of questions in a public forum for this group. I think we can address that a little bit through statistics. We can get that data for you to at least show what we have, because then anything beyond the statistics really is speculation on what's actually occurring. But I'll make sure we give you the data as far as incidents from last year, arrests that have may have been made, and I'll have that for you as soon as we can.
Thank you very much, chief. I actually wanted to tug on that one from a slightly different direction, which is, yeah, it's pretty interesting. I mean, I think people didn't know that before. Are there other kinds of things that you folks survey to look at? I mean, you had a couple of questions unrelated to this, but anything else, you know? Use of, you know, use of, you know, test prep services or tutors or something like that, you know? Do you guys keep track of other kinds of data besides this?
It really depends on the year. Last year, we had a lot of different questions related to traffic. And so I think definitely in the future, when we're trying to advocate for more student voice, that is definitely something we want to do and want to keep in mind, especially because this year we've been planning a lot on our smaller events, so we haven't had time to put a lot of focus in our surveys, but that can definitely change for next year as well.
I mean, I looked at this, I thought, yeah, this is best practices, so this is I noticed that you said, there's a comment here about event venues. Do you find you're limited by lack of access to event venues at this point?
Well, I would say for our final study cram exam, we had probably the perfect location because it was at a library. But I definitely know for our Palapalooza event, we were a little bit constrained in the fact that we had so -- we have so many things going on, but the fact that we have to be in the Mitchell Park Courtyard in the middle of kind of a library area is a little bit tough with all the different things we're trying to accomplish. And so we know other venues are also a cost factor. And so that was an issue for that particular event, and it could be an issue in the future with other large inter-school events that are supposed to be inter-school and have lots of people there.
And I think just like, so I think it hasn't been like a huge problem, but I think one thing is we have to really plan ahead if we want to, like, have something that has more room, more than just one or two rooms. I think the other problem is we've noticed that when we have events in the Mitchell Park Center, it tends to only attract a certain population, mostly Gun students, because it's closer to where they live. So we were thinking about having, like, a venue that is more in the middle of all the different schools so that we can have more students coming in. And that's like the two biggest. And I think actually going to the price problem, you mentioned if we had more money, what we do. I think this is like a venue, like, space is probably one of the places we could probably invest more in if we had more money.
Although it's interesting, if the city provided more money, but then the city provided the venue and we, like, give you some more money and then take it back and the venue, that... Right? Right? Okay. Well, okay, so if there are things that we can do to facilitate access to that, that would, you know, let us know. Anything else from council? Lydia?
I just want to congratulate Claire for, she just ran a campaign, and she won. So I want to congratulate her, but also maybe you can tell us a little bit about your campaign and what position you were running for.
We'll put you on the spot here.
Yeah, so I ran for Guns Representative for the School Board. That's kind of why I kind of brought that in today in their meeting. So just to go, just like briefly, so I think, like, the biggest problem that I see, and it's kind of tangentially related to POIC, too, it's, I think, a lot of students have a distrust towards the administration. And also, not necessarily as much to the city, but I think just, like, they don't feel like they're being heard. And I think a lot of the reason why students aren't as vocal, they don't attend school board meetings, they don't come to city council meetings, is because they kind of feel like their efforts are futile, which is not necessarily true. So I think one of the biggest goals that I have, if I'm, not if, being school board rep, is kind of, yeah, like, part of it is better facilitation of, like, more surveys to the students on school issues, on city issues. And I was actually kind of curious on, like, so I think, like, with our goal of being more policy-based next year, so right now, all we can really think of are, like, more surveys to teens. We were wondering of, like, what other forms could that, you know, more policy-based approach kind of have for POIC?
And you folks have specific sort of, I mean, I can use the word special interest groups, but specific functions, like, if you're a group that's very focused on sustainability and climate change, or a group that's focused on other kinds of things? Do you folks do have sort of subcommittee kind of things like that?
In the past, it's kind of varied. So in the past, we had different subcommittees for different projects. But in the end, I think what happened was that we'd only focus on one main event, whereas this year we wanted to have a lot of different ones. And so what we did instead is we'd have the entire council working on a specific event or project, but have them break off into different subsets of that project, and then we'd move on. We found that that was a lot more effective because we could get things done quicker and we could really collaborate more in that way and make sure that things were getting done.
So focused around a specific project or program? Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you very much for doing what you do and for joining us tonight, and look forward to, I think, I think this is good stuff here. I'm sorry, did you want to say something? Oh, yeah. Yeah, let's see. Guys want to take a picture? So, and I want, and with staff. And why don't, why doesn't everybody sort of come in here and we'll do that? And thanks again.
There you go.
Thank you again, and thanks very much to staff for all the work you've put into this. And this is, you know, this is good stuff to do, and I know it's not trivial. So, thanks.
Yeah, you got some questions up here. Where do we get some of those cool t-shirts? But... Are there any?
None from staff.
In that case, we move on to the city manager comments.
Oh my, you're moving quickly tonight. I do have just a few community-related items of note for your information. First off, a couple of calendar items. This Saturday, we do have our Great Race for Saving Water and Earth Day Festival. This Saturday, April 13th, you can join the city's Great Race for Saving Water and the Earth Day Festival Sixth Annual Event, offering a 5K, 10K, and Kids Dash at the Palo Alto Balanço. Public is invited to join Mayor Phil Seth and elected officials from the San Francisco Keet Creek. Oh, I can usually say that much easier. San Francisco Creek. Took me a while to practice that one, but I thought I had it down. JPA, Joint Powers Authority, and Valley Water at a ribbon-cutting ceremony immediately before the race to celebrate completion of the San Francisco Creek Flood Control Project. After the race, enjoy a free festival with Electric Vehicle Expo, live music, green living vendors, food prizes, and community booths, offering environmental and public safety resources. No ticket or entry fee is required for this festival from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Details are on the city's website. Next, a bit of kudos here to the Utilities Department earning its fifth consecutive Tree Line USA Award. Again, this is fifth year in a row, city has been recognized with the Tree Line USA Utility Award by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Tree Line USA promotes dual goals of delivering safe and reliable electricity while maintaining healthy trees. Palo Alto is among an elite group of communities recognized by Tree City, as a Tree City USA, Tree Line USA Utility, and a Tree Campus USA with Stanford University. This Tree of Honors is a testament to a community's commitment to preserving health of our urban canopy. Let's see. Next, also on the environmental front, VMware and the city of Palo Alto has received a notification that we are finalists for the Energy category of Fast Company Magazine's 2019 World Changing Ideas Award. Our project with VMware was chosen among 2,000 submissions in 17 categories worldwide. This is our microgrid project. Award winners will be included as part of a May announcement. Another upcoming event this weekend, if you don't get enough on Saturday of a run, you can attend the Sunday, April 14th, Battle of the Badges, to watch the Palo Alto Police Department and Palo Alto Fire Department in a charity softball game. This Sunday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Greer Park, there will be barbecue, bake sale, opportunities to explore fire trucks and police vehicles, and more. Not sure what the "more" is, other than a softball game, hopefully no one gets hurt. Proceeds going to benefit St. Jude's Children's Hospital.
Oh, okay.
And let's see, last item, also for your calendar, Palo Alto's 125th Birthday. As you know, Palo Alto is celebrating its 125th birthday this year. There'll be many events throughout the year to mark this milestone, but please save the date on Sunday, April 28th, 2:00 PM here at King Plaza. You can come sing "Happy Birthday," enjoy entertainment, and discover the contents of the time capsule buried 25 years ago in City Hall's Elevator Shaft. Of course, there will be a birthday cake, if I didn't mention that. And that concludes my comments this evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you. And congratulations to the Utilities Department on their work with VMware, and look forward to seeing how that comes out. to seeing how that comes out. We now proceed to oral communications where any member of the public may speak. Are there any cards?
No, there are not, although we had a question from one about, she's short a person to do a five, to get five people, but she's walked out of the room. So right now, we have no speakers for oral communications, and I don't know if she's coming back.
Why don't we approve the minutes? And if she comes back in a couple of minutes, she will have her chance. A motion to approve minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Niss absent. Next, we move to the consent calendar. And I will move the consent calendar.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember DeBois. Seeing no lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that also passes unanimously with Councilmember Niss absent. And we are rocking and rolling on the, on the clock here. So next, we move to action items, and the first action item is a quasi-judicial hearing in regards to parcels on, at 3225 El Camino Real, which I believe was the old Foot Locker space. Is that correct? Okay, and is there a staff, a staff presentation? Before we do that, is that the person that wanted to speak?
Yeah. There's a third one.
Okay. We will do the oral communications then. And, and how many of the, how many of you are there?
Four.
Four.
So five minutes, I think? Do you need more?
Maybe. I mean, each, you mean, or?
A total.
Are we allowed to have one person present for everybody?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Is there?
How much time do you need?
10 minutes?
Can you?
I can skip.
Can you do it in, four people, can you do it in eight? Thank you.
All right. All right, and I'll do my best. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Can you pass this to them? Yeah, thanks. All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Tina Chow, and I live in Barren Park, and we were trying to prepare our comments, so I'll try to summarize all of them. So I'm here to provide some more comments and background as you consider the proposed small cell tower ordinance revisions. We know that you all care about residents because that's why you're doing this, and you're putting so many hours in to serve our city, and we're deeply thankful for the all that you do. Regarding the small cell towers in Palo Alto, we hear some people say that city council members have their hands tied, but we actually think you have more power and freedom than you think. And so first, we're going to provide a few recent updates from the news that might help. Just this week, the California Supreme Court affirmed that cities can regulate small cell towers in the public right of way. This is a significant ruling by the California Supreme Court for cell towers and for local regulation, and it may have, it may reach beyond the aesthetics and bear implication for ordinances that are adapted by cities and counties. Also, just this past week, there were plans for a 5G pilot project in Brussels that were halted due to health concerns for public health. So Brussels, Belgium has become the first city in the world to halt 5G due to health effects. Also, last week, the Larkspur Town Council in Marin thoughtfully and carefully examined many options and even seriously considered a moratorium on 5G, where the legal counsel in Larkspur said it was possible, and we can consider that here, too. Finally, also last week, there was an article in Wired Magazine by Harvard Law Professor Susan Crawford, formally acknowledging health effects of 5G. She wrote, quote, "There's a new, to me, angle to 5G that I've resisted in the past. What if transmissions to and from 5G cells, which will need to be everywhere and much closer to us than traditional cell towers, pulsing out very high-frequency radio waves at high-power levels, pose real risks to human health?" She goes on to give details of recent studies and research, and then comments, quote, "As with climate change, where denial rhetoric has been driven by companies interested in maintaining the status quo, the wireless industry is vitally interested in assuring us that 5G poses no issues, or that there's an unresolved debate, so we should trust the existing radio frequency exposure standards. That's where we are now." And then she goes on to say, quote, "If we were wise, we'd figure this out before we go further. As Nathaniel Rich pointed out last summer in the New York Times Magazine in his article on climate change, 30 years ago, we had a chance to save the planet." So I wanted to also talk about some specific actions that we can take here. So let me jump to that part. So I wanted to comment on the staff report for the April 15th meeting, and first, really to commend city staff for an excellent and comprehensive report in preparation for that meeting when the votes will be taken. We think it provides a really nice summary of the components in our existing wireless ordinance and the proposed changes, and it also brings up some key ideas which we can take further. In particular, note that we are allowed to specify setbacks from homes and schools, and we are allowed to specify minimum spacing between small cell facilities. This is super significant, and it would address so many of residents' concerns. We're also fortunate that we have many nearby cities who are working on this issue, and now we just have to figure out how to do this here in Palo Alto. So as you know, the Planning and Transportation Committee Commission and the Architectural Review Board recommended that the council consider setbacks and work together with residents on this. First, just consider that Verizon's own public information indicates that 5G antennas transmit signals that are strong enough to provide 1 gigabyte, 1 gigabyte, I think it must be 1 gigabit per second, maybe I have that wrong, sorry, on the spot here, 1 gigabyte per second of data, like that's 1 gigabit, at 3,000 feet. Thus, we can easily require minimum spacings of 1,500 feet. Regarding setbacks, other cities have deliberated at length on this issue as well, and we can also learn from them. For example, we can work together to create maps that show where cell towers are allowed, to show the allowed zones, and at the very least, we can provide a list of preferred locations, such as Mill Valley, San Anselmo, and Fairfax are doing. This then gets combined with a robust exceptions chapter, and so that's what I passed out, just to give you a sample of language. Our city staff have done a really nice job adding proposed exceptions language to handle cases where providers want to install a cell tower where it's not allowed by whatever zoning and setback requirements we would place. To quote from the staff report, "To qualify for exceptions," quote, "They would face the difficult task of showing that a network is not feasible using the city's standards, or that the strict application of the standards would otherwise violate federal law." So we suggest adding even more to the exceptions chapter in the proposed ordinance to make the ordinance stronger. And that's what the handout is, just to give you an idea of some of the language that can go in there. For example, you can require a comparative analysis supported by an independent third-party review with reasons why all the alternative locations and/or designs identified in the record, in the administrative record, are not technically feasible. This would include alternatives suggested by the applicant, the town, public comments, et cetera. Also, they would have to use the least noncompliant configuration that would work, and they would have to show that the small cell would be in compliance with all applicable health, safety, and environmental regulations, including the American with Disabilities Act, the Endangered Species Act, and all FCC rules and regulations for human exposure to RF emissions. So these are all federal laws, and so those are details that could go in the exceptions clause. So therefore, the key to a strong ordinance that addresses resident concerns is providing interlocking components, such that setbacks, such as setbacks and minimum spacings, and supported by a strong exceptions clause. There are several other components that we can describe at another time, but the bottom line is that Palo Alto, like other cities, can do more to reestablish local control, to preserve public health and the safety of kids in schools and homes in our city. So this is obviously complicated and needs further investigation, but it's doable, as other cities have shown. And as another thing to think about, it might even be possible to consider a moratorium, which is exactly what the town of Larkspur discussed at length last week. So I would say to please ask our legal staff to talk to the legal staff in Larkspur about how they were able to consider this. The idea would be that passing a temporary pause on the placement of these small cells would allow us time to work on a good ordinance which incorporates elements like the ones I just talked about. So thank you for giving us the time tonight, and we look forward to further discussions with you.
Thank you very much. We have a second speaker here, which is Kathleen Goldstein. Welcome.
Thank you, Gold Fine. And I want to bring to the council's attention that Caltrain 2040 is once again proposing a four-lane passing track from Mountain View to California Avenue. The last time HSR proposed that, their final environmental impact statement admitted they would have to take two to three lanes of Alma Street in order to, to do that, because they don't have 100-foot water right away in part of that area. And I would hope that our council would, I am in favor of the plan in general. I'm in favor of increasing the capacity of Caltrain, but not at the expense of the residents like me who live on Alma Street, where even today, during commute hours, it backs up 3/4 of a mile from, from East Meadow. We cannot afford to give up that, that way in and out, across, it is the main east-west, north-south route in Palo Alto. And no matter how good a job we do to encourage our new businesses to not be in a car, I think the best I've seen is a 50%, and we're talking about increasing development, increasing offices, and there's not going to be a reduction of cars. There will be a reduced increase in car. We need five lanes on Alma.
Thank you. So with that, we move on to item number six, which is a quasi-judicial hearing regarding I suppose we should. Let's, so that's a good point. So we'll start on this end of the table with Councilmember Cormac.
I have no, nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose?
I have nothing to disclose.
Nothing either.
Nothing.
So, thank you, and please proceed.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Jonathan Leit, director, planning director. I'm joined by Sheldon Ah Sing, who's the contract planner for this application. This is a pretty formulaic application, the final map. You've, the city has processed its architectural review application before, and the city council has previously seen the tentative map. And so this is a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Sorry.
There's a, there's a word that appropriately describes this, but it's blinking, I'm blinking on it right now. In any event...
May I suggest perfunctory?
Thank you. That is the word I was looking for.
I was thinking procedural, but...
All of those work. But anyways, we're here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this subdivision.
Thank you. I, Andrew Uvacko? I'm looking at here.
I'm just a neighbor. I don't have any.
Ah.
So I'm with a company called We Fix Max.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
So I was only calling, I was only here because I wanted to see if the, the last time that there was a big construction next to our store, the city had approved a large sign that is, you know, over and above what normally people get. And so when this building is getting built, it's going to block some of our signage and things like that. So I was just hoping to get a permission to get a bigger sign.
So certainly I can meet with the speaker after the hearing.
Okay, thank you. We don't respond to, we don't respond to public commentary directly from, but the suggestion is have a chat with the planning department afterwards.
Okay, sure. Thank you very much. That's, I mean, you see, like if you go down El Camino, lots of people that are construction, they have big signs that says "Still Open" or "Come Here," like something like that. That's all I'm trying to get. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we return to council. Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. Just one really quick question. What are our rules around demolition? Because there was a tentative map approved, I guess then the project or old building was demolished, now it's been empty, and now we're approving the final map. So I just would love to hear.
Yeah, so typically on applications that do not require a map, we would allow demolition of a commercial property to occur after the entitlement has been granted. And this, and that holds true for this property as well. The demolition permit has been granted, and the building, as I understand it, has been demolished. But we, you may have received correspondence from the applicant about issuance of a permit to begin excavation or a building permit in advance of the final map. And in that case, we do have a condition on the tentative map that said no building permit shall be issued prior to adoption of the final map. And the reason for that is when we issue a building permit and across its property lines, that creates some other regulatory challenges for us. And so we really need this piece to take place before we can issue a building permit.
So we're doing the final map, then they get their building permits?
That's right.
For the multiple sites?
That's right.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm happy to support this.
So I just, I guess I have a procedural question, because the recommendation is that it be improved on the, approved on the consent calendar, and yet it's not an action item, so...
Yeah, thank you. That was just, we'd really tried to get this on your consent calendar, but when we looked at the specific rules, it's, it lent itself for an action item, and I think that might be a future code amendment that we make, so that we can process these on consent in the future.
Okay. I was just confused. I went back and forth a few times. I'm like, okay, all right, great. Thanks for that. I don't think there was, I guess the only other question since I was not on council when this went before is the BMR requirement? Has the applicant made a decision on, on what they're doing?
So Sheldon will double-check, but my recollection was at the time that this project came forward, the BMR requirement did not apply to five or more, it applied to five or more ownership units. This has four ownership units and four rental units. And so the way that the BMR rules were in, at the, the way the BMR rules were at the place, at the time of entitlement, it did not require BMR contribution. Today, if this project were to go forward, it would be different, because we've lowered our threshold to three or more units.
Okay, I'm just looking at the packet, and it says there's .6, and then they have in Lufy's instead. I mean, I'm guessing from this that they decided to do the fee, but it's just not clear, so...
So there's no onsite affordability for this project?
Okay.
Is my understanding. And if there is a fractional requirement, they would have paid a fee.
It says fractional, okay.
And I guess what I'm questioning is, was there even a fractional requirement? However, I will tell you this, all of that would have been sorted out through the vesting tentative map and the ARB approval, and is not determinative of any action that you take on your final map.
Thank you.
So if I'm wrong about that fact, it still would have been captured in the previous entitlement.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Koo.
On the same question about the BMR, if they were going to build one, if they decide to, if they decide to have one, is it one, would they include a BMR unit instead of paying the in-Lufy? Will that be one of the eight, or, or they can build another one? So there'll be nine units? But I guess on this particular project there, it's for, it's for sale and for...
So when, so our code requires, and I'm trying to remember if it, if it's changed recently, but at the time that this was approved, a fractional unit above one would have been, provide the unit and pay the fee. Below the one unit, you would have paid the fractional fee amount. So in this case, according to the conditions that Sheldon's looking at now, it looks like they were responsible for a proportional fee, and so therefore, there's no unit provided on site.
Okay. Yeah, the only reason I ask is because when I was reading through that findings, the map process, basically it said that, you know, they, they have a choice of, when you, when they go a further step, they, then they have a choice of either just paying the in-Lufy, or they might decide to build something. So I was just wondering, if they built something, would it be one of the eight? Would one of the eight units become a BMR unit, or can they build a ninth one? Wouldn't that require them to come back? Although this is, right now, on this, it's not, it doesn't apply, right?
Right. So I would just say that should the applicant decide to change their plans and want to include one BMR unit... include one BMR unit, we could do that administratively, should they want to do that.
And remind me, where was the trash pickup on this one? Is it out on the street?
Yeah. So that would have been reviewed with the architectural review application that was processed earlier. I don't have those architectural plans tonight. What we're talking about is really just an airspace subdivision, and we don't have those kind of details for you.
And then the final review process, does it come back to council, or it's through...
This project's already been reviewed and approved.
The final project has already...
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah. This is just a... Again, it's a part of the subdivision law. When somebody wants to subdivide a property, they have to go through a two-step process. One is the tentative map, and that gets reviewed and by the reviewing agencies and the decision-making body. If that gets approved, then the applicant goes through the next stage of actually preparing the map, and that's called the final map. And this is something that the council has in the past considered both on consent and on action, but now that we've taken a closer look at the reading of the code, it lends itself to this action item. But again, it is perfunctory, really, because the tentative map has already been approved. It's really just a matter of saying, does this final map, is it consistent with what was previously reviewed? And our staff and along with engineering have looked at it, and we have found it to be consistent, and that's why we've set it on your agenda for approval tonight.
So once this is approved, it goes to ARB?
There's no other action after this.
There's no more action?
No, they're ready to get a building permit and start constructing. Yeah.
Then, in that case, if I might ask, you know, the interest... I think last week, we approved the Parmeni Hotel, right? And then there's that zebra crossing that goes straight to the front of this property. Is the sidewalk there enough? Because we're expecting quite a few, a number of traffic, foot traffic crossing El Camino. Because there's Hanson Way, and then there's the zebra crossing at Hanson Way, and then there's another crossing from Hanson over to the front of that building. So do we need enhanced sidewalk over there in order to make sure it accommodates the foot traffic?
So the El Camino guidelines would have required an effective 12-foot setback, and again, that would have been reviewed under the architectural review board. So at least at the time that the project was reviewed, the planners and the transportation folks, as well as public works, would have found that there would have been a sufficient sidewalk space for the proposed project.
Okay.
But at this point, with the final map, it'd be... I want to check in with legal, but it's not consistent. If the city were to require a greater sidewalk at this point, this would not be the time to make that request. It would have been at the time of the vesting tentative map and based on certain nexus or findings that we'd have to make.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I'll move the staff's motion.
Second.
A move by Councilmember DeBois, second by Vice Mayor Fine. Care to speak to your motion?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Nothing either. Thank you for the work on this.
Seeing no further lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Niss absent. Thank you very much. So for the next item, I believe, the city manager is going to step out.
Yes, that's correct. Michelle Poche Flaherty will be here for me, and I believe Kylie Nocay will... Actually, Kylie and Sunny Tong will be here for administrative services.
It's been a long meeting. Can we take a break? I'm just kidding.
We're an hour and 20 minutes into this, and we're on the last action item, aren't Thank you, and you have the floor.
Good evening, council. I'm Kylie, your interim chief financial officer. And with me tonight, I have Sunny Tong, our real estate manager. And I'll briefly tee this up, but Sunny will take it through. Here, before council, we're looking for direction, and two options are laid before the council, option A and B. It's all in regards to the address 335 Webster Street, the former city manager's house. So option A is to allow the city manager to sell the property. So this would be a public sale, and we would split the proceeds based on our equity interest. Option B is for the city to exercise its option to purchase the manager's remaining interest in the property, which is about 33%. And so Sunny will go through the particulars, but tonight, we're looking for a direction from council on A or B, so that staff can move forward either way. Go for it, Sunny.
Thank you. So this slide just demonstrates the property itself, properties located at 335 Webster Street in downtown Palo Alto. It's currently owned by former city manager James and Iris Keen, their trust. And the property is a approximate 2,000-square-foot wood frame residence, improved on an approximate This is a zoning map, and it shows that the property is zoned R2, two-family residential zoning, and the comprehensive plan designation is single-family residential. Next, the city manager's... The former city manager's contract identifies the events that triggers the sale. The first one is applicable in this situation, and that's at the option of the former city manager. He has identified to us that he wants to sell his property. This slide identifies the two options. Again, option A being we're gonna sell the property outright to the public and get the best offer. Option B would be the city exercising its option to acquire the former city manager's 33.8% share. So if we were to sell the property outright, we would split it 33.8% to the former city manager, and the city would get 66.2% less the outstanding balance of the former city manager's loans. And if we were to exercise the option to acquire the city manager's property, we would get an appraisal that's acceptable to both sides. If both sides can't agree to appraiser, we would each get our own appraiser, and the average of the two appraisals would be the price that the city would acquire the property. Under option A, if we were to sell the property, the funds we would get would be unrestricted and could be used for the current city manager's permanent residence. Under option B, the funding to purchase the former city manager's share would be through the budget stabilization reserve or the infrastructure reserve. And finally, want to point out that if we were to sell the property, the property would... The property, if it was to sell to a non-exempt entity, the entire property would be assessed on the property tax rule. But if we were to acquire the former city manager's share, the entire property would be removed from the property tax rule. And lastly, just want to conclude by saying the two options. The first option, again, option A being that the city would sell the property outright, and option B would be to have the city acquire the former city manager's 33.8% share in residence. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will go to the public if there is comment. And do we have... We have two speakers, and so you'll have three minutes, and the first speaker will be Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth, and councilmembers. At first, I thought it didn't make much difference whether you chose option A or B, but I got to thinking about it, and I would recommend that you buy the property and use it for city facility and as a lease option for senior staff. We have a number of senior staff vacancies right now due to retirement and people moving out of the area, leaving the area, and going someplace else, and you're going to be hiring them in the next six or eight months. And having an option where you can give them a reasonable housing source and something that's within walking distance of City Hall would make it a lot easier, I think, to be able to actually hire somebody for the senior positions which you'll be looking for. Another point is that having, owning housing in Palo Alto is not a bad investment. Last year, almost a third of the properties that were bought in Palo Alto were bought by people from not just out of town, but out of the country, and most of them were not as their primary residence, but as speculation and as a way that they figured they would grow their resources. So I think at first, it would be a reasonably good investment in terms of getting senior staff on board. Second, economically, it's a reasonably good investment. And third, it gives you an option. If a year or two from now, you don't need it, you can sell it, and you're certainly not going to lose money on it in two or three years. You're going to make money. So I think overall, the best option... Oh, and you're only talking about buying about, is paying about a third of it. So based on what houses that size have been selling for in the last four or five months, we're talking about a city expenditure on the order of maybe $700,000, which is not that big a deal. So I think it's worthwhile investing in that property and having something that you can offer as a reasonable or subsidized rent to some of the senior staff you're going to have to be hiring in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers, we... He was to the last one, I think.
Oh, sorry.
No further speakers to this item. We return to council for comments and questions. Councilmember DeBois?
I choose first.
Were you first? Okay, sorry. You know, I have both a Niss and a DeBois here at the same time, okay? So let's go to Councilmember Cormac first.
Six, one half dozen of another. So this is an interesting staff report. Usually, we have a recommendation and not a, you know, right down the middle, 50/50. I'm going to start with questions because I'm not yet sure what the right answer is. And so one of the questions is, what is the outstanding balance on the loan? Is that something we're permitted to know? If not, that's fine, but...
Sure. There's about $487,000 remaining on the loan. This is as of January of 2019, so I'm going to give a little...
Okay, so that's the 468 plus the 125 minus whatever's been paid. Okay. 487, great. She said 487,000 left. And then, because I wasn't on council last year, and I've heard various things, is it a requirement for our city manager to live in Palo Alto? And/or is it a requirement that the city purchase a residence? I just see in A3 something that brings this question up.
Councilmember Cormac, I'm going to look at the contract. I can pull it up, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's fine. It's not... So one thing that was missing was just sort of like, so, you know, doing the math here ourselves, but it does sound like our illustrious commenter is in the right neighborhood in terms of if we exercised option B, if you just average, you know, the 3.2 and the 4.4, although, you know, we'll wait for Councilmember Koo, who might have some thoughts about what the range would be here. And then subtracted, it does look like option... Do you have a number, you know, that you want us to use as an estimate for what option B might cost?
Obviously, from a fiscal perspective, I would say go with the higher of the numbers.
Okay, all right.
But, you know, if you just assumed it was about a $4 million house, just because it's a nice round number, you'd be looking at about $850,000 to $900,000.
Okay. And what do you think we would receive if we exercised our option A to authorize the sale?
Somewhere in the range. It's published in the report. I mean, it really depends on what the market's appetite is for a house of that size in that location, also with the layout that it currently...
But if we assume the 4 million, right? Just if we keep it the same between A and B?
Mm-hmm.
How much do you think we get back after the loan? You're just saying, so it'd be the 3.2?
Right.
No, 487, sorry. You said 487. So 3.5?
Correct.
And tenants in common is kind of a rare way to do things. Is that how we've traditionally done city managers' residences? Is that how Mr... Tenants in common is the way that the property is held? And that's kind of rare, is my understanding. Is that how we did it for Mr. Bennetts? Is that just standard?
I wouldn't... I don't actually know how we did former manager Bennetts' contract. I can find out though.
It's not... I'm just curious. Okay. I'm going to be interested to see what my colleagues have to say and what our obligations are for the current city manager.
Councilmember DeBois.
And if we do a transaction like this between ourselves and Jim Keen, do we also, do we still have closing costs if any source, just a private transaction?
Yeah, I think we'll still have closing costs because we'll be going through an escrow process similar to a private transaction.
I'm sorry. I'm having trouble hearing tonight for some reason.
We'll still be going through, using escrow to close the transaction, so it'll be similar to a...
So we pay title fees and things, but we wouldn't have an agent commission or anything, right?
We wouldn't be having an agent commission.
Okay.
But we'll have closing fees.
And could you be a little more specific? If we did purchase, would the funds would come out of our, just a budget reserve in general?
Right. So this, your two options would be either the general fund budget stabilization reserve or your capital infrastructure reserve. Both funds have been used before for funding property acquisitions. They're unrestricted funds, but it does come into question from a council priority standpoint of how they want to spend those types of unrestricted funds, and if this is one of those.
Do you have any concerns about the council deciding to purchase the property and using those reserves?
In terms of using those reserves, I think it will put a stronger strain on council's 2020 budget planning over the course of the next few months, just because if you drain those reserves, then we will need to replenish them to maintain council targeted levels of 18.5%. So that would be an additional thing to be added to the to-do list in terms of that. I may have other concerns beyond just the funding aspect of it.
If we take out a second mortgage and replenish the reserves? I mean, there's a lot of appreciation of the property, right? So it's a bit unusual, because usually, something like this, if there was competitive bidding involved, we'd be in a closed session discussing this. But because it's kind of a prescribed procedure, I guess we can talk about it in public. Just my thoughts, I think generally, it's really hard for us to, for the city to acquire And so here, we already own 67% or so, so there's some attraction there. And I do like the idea of considering purchasing to use for senior staff. We have some very difficult positions to recruit for, the head of utilities. I mean, we have acting people in position, but in the future, you know, these positions can be really hard to attract people to our area. So head of utilities, a police chief, a fire chief, even the assistant city manager. So if we pass on this now, I think we just need to think about what would it cost us in the future, you know? And we're going to incur closing costs on both the selling of this property and the purchase of another property. And, you know, there are some other options. I think, you know, Bob Moss was talking about having available to lease to some staff. We could even think of it as short-term housing for new people while they're getting, if they move in here from out of state or from another city. In worst case, I figure we could camouflage some 5G... In worst case, let's figure we could camouflage some 5G antennas in the middle of the house. Just kidding. So I'm not going to make a motion. I'm definitely leaning more towards we should seriously consider purchasing it. But I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
See, Councilmember Koo, I believe you were next, and you want to argue that buying residential real estate in Palo Alto is a bad deal?
I would never say that. Although, I do have to say that, you know, this property, we, I haven't seen the inside of it, so it's pretty specific and there's a, there might be custom features in there, and it's only a two-bedroom. And it's in a very high expensive area. So I don't, I would really like to see that the funds that we have be stretched to go as far as possible. So I'd never say to sell, I mean, I always advocated for keeping our real estate assets. However, on this one, I think that there is more opportunities if we did sell it and then use the funds to develop properties that we have, that Palo Alto has and Palo Alto owns, such as the two lots that is on Middlefield Road. And if we could have more bedrooms in there and ADU also on the property, then it might be able to go farther for employees' short-term lease. I mean, there's ways to explore, but I'd really like to see the funds that we have go farther. And I don't know, keeping this high-priced property, if it would actually be the best choice or the wisest choice on seeing how far our money can go, the city's money can go. Additionally, we'll get back the property taxes also if it was sold. So then there would be more revenue coming in, so...
Can I ask a clarification of staff on that? Did you say it was two bedrooms or three? It's 2,000 square feet and two bedrooms? Councilmember Tanaka.
So I have to agree with Councilmember Koo on this one. So if you do the math, let's say it's a $4 million house, the mortgage payment on that would be about $19,000 a month, right? That's, that's equivalent mortgage. So we just gave that to, say, an employee, that's equivalent of giving them $228,000 a year extra on top of what we pay them already. So that's extraordinary, right? I don't know of any other city that gives that kind of, we already give a housing subsidy for our city manager, but to give a $228,000 housing subsidy is extraordinary, right? So I, I think, I think, I think Councilmember Koo is right. We should probably use this money that we get from this to, you know, we're trying to buy a park right now, maybe help fund that park, right? I think the public will see more revenue from, from that. I think that, also, I don't like the optics of it either. I think it's, it's optically to, to say, we're going to give this, you know, $4 million house to, you know, to a privileged few doesn't, this doesn't strike me as being very egalitarian. So I also don't like it for that reason as well. And, you know, right now, in terms of our real estate market, I was walking, I was, I'm not sure if you guys heard of Robert Schiller. He did a Schiller Housing Index. So he, you know, is a big housing economist. And he was talking recently about how, you know, of course, no one can call it, right? But we might be at the peak of the market in terms of housing. Don't know. Maybe it'll keep going up. It's hard to say. But certainly, there's a slowing. You know, we've had a pretty big downturn in China, so there's certainly less foreign money coming in. You know, it's unclear about whether the economy, whether, right now, right now, we're on one of the biggest economic bull runs since the 60s, and it's unclear whether that will continue forever. Hopefully, it does, but, you know, I don't think we can count on it. So right now, it might be a good time to cash out and use it, use the cash, use the, use the capital for something that the public could really use, like maybe if we built that park in Ventura, we could actually pay for it and we could actually build something nice there, right? So that the public could use it and everyone can enjoy it versus just one individual, right? Which I think would not be the right kind of tone that we want to set in the city. And now, I do realize that recruiting people in the city is tough, but I'd rather just pay our employees more versus giving someone, giving a privileged one or two persons, or I guess it's probably just one person, some, some massive giveaway, right? Like a $200,000, $228,000 a year bonus by having the privilege of having this house, which to me is just, it's just not what Palo Alto's about. And I think, you know, in terms of selling a house, you know, I have to defer to my, my fellow councilmember who knows real estate really well, but I would say that, you know, I think we should also, if we, you know, if we do decide to sell this house, that we, you know, we try to do it economically as well, right? If it's a $4 million property, you know, a lot of real estate agents would sell it for less than 3% commission, right? Could we get 1% commission or 2% commission or less, right, perhaps? But I think my, I think my, my councilmember might have more opinions about that. But, so I think, so I'd like to see us redeploy this capital. You know, I think we bought it at a good time. I think we're selling it at a good time. Now, we have lots of our properties that we can develop. We have a lot of needs for capital. I hate to see us drain our budget stabilization reserve. We already drained it last year. We took about $2.3 million out last year. Hate for us to keep draining it. And I don't like the tone in terms of, it's like, in terms of having a, you know, super expensive house for some, some single individual, it doesn't strike me as, as what the residents here in our city want. I think we, I think they would want us to see this capital deployed to help the people here in Palo Alto, right? I think we should, we should, I think we're lucky to buy it at a good price, and I think we'll be lucky to sell at a good price. And I think we should, we should make sure that we, we use this capital in the best interest of the public. That said also, I would say that, I think there's actually going to be a self-tower built near there, so I think when we sell, we should also, the school's at, that's us, that's probably also very important. But yeah, and I think also, when we sell it, we should, you know, I think we should, we should do our best to sell it to get the best price, of course, because this is money to the city. But I don't think we should go all out and have like a gigantic party there and, you know, I mean, I think we should, we should sell it like, you know, because I think a lot of those kind of fanfare things, there were more to get the listings for realtors versus trying to get, trying to sell the property. So I think we just want to be kind of smart about it as well.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I came in here not exactly sure what I thought of this issue, so I've been waiting just to hear from you all. I think I'm starting to lean towards the arguments made by councilmembers Koo and Tanaka about selling and deleveraging the property. I have a couple of questions, and then we'll hopefully hear from the mayor. So first of all, what is the current subsidy or rent we offer to the city manager?
So his temporary housing is up to, oh, sorry. Not the second. Thanks. So his current agreement has an initial temporary housing clause within it that says the rental or lease costs are not to exceed $4,000 per month.
Okay. So right now, we are giving our city manager $4,000 a month for temporary housing. If we envision this property as a good site for the city manager or senior staff, Councilmember DuBois mentioned a number of them, let's just keep that figure in mind about what we're paying right now. But Councilmember Tanaka, you mentioned marginal 19K a month?
Yeah. If the property is worth $4 million, you can mortgage out at today's low interest rates, it's about $19,000, $20,000 a month. If interest rates go up, then it could be way more than that.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Fine. I think we should, I, I believe it's on, yes. The council should also be aware of what the long-term housing commitment is to the current city manager, and I'll read the provision. It says, "Within a reasonable time, as agreed to by the parties, Shikata agrees to make his primary residence within the corporate limits of the city. The amount of the city contribution and any contribution from the city manager. The method of financing and other elements of purchase transaction will be determined through good faith negotiations and mutual agreement and documented in an amendment to this agreement."
Okay. Thank you. But I think just, just operationally on that point, we can expect that with Mr. Shikata and, you know, in the future, when we hire a new city manager, excuse me, there's a good chance that for a year or so, we may be paying this $4,000 per month, and that's kind of a base to compare to. Few other questions. Does the city own any other single-family homes?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Thank you. And then there's also the question, I think Councilmember Tanaka got at this, about, you know, what's the use of this property? We don't actually have an identified use today. You know, we all think it may be for the city manager, but it seems to have disappeared, actually. You know? Is he? Yeah? That's why. You know, it could be for the fire chief, police chief, whatever we want to identify. We don't know if that's actually an attractive option for those folks. And so that's something to consider, Councilmember Koo. Our colleague, who's also a Realtor, you know, did mention it's only a two-bedroom, on a 2,000-square-foot home. That may be an issue. There's also an issue of equity, right? Do we want to subsidize some of these senior positions at a certain level above and beyond the rest of the positions in our city staff? Or as Councilmember Tanaka mentioned, do we just want to pay our staff more? And I'll put in a, I won't even go into the build more housing thing, but you know where I am on that. Do any nearby cities have anything like this in terms of purchasing a home for city manager, senior staff, things like that?
It is common to see agreements for the city manager level position in terms of either a loan or some sort of housing assistance to have them in the, in the area. I would say it is less common to see it for below the city manager level, but it's, it depends on the jurisdiction and the positions.
But do we know anybody around here, you know, Redwood City to San Jose or so, that owns a single-family home and provides it to senior staff?
I know that the city of Sunnyvale has done it.
Okay.
I know that the city of Menlo Park has done it. I know that the city of Mountain View's city manager does not, also because, yeah, they live close anyway.
Yep.
So it just depends on the recruitment.
All right. Thank you. And I guess just one, one or two last points. If we don't do this, what's the alternative? And Councilmember Koo did bring up that we have these lots on Middlefield, which potentially is a city, we could up so and develop as, you know, city housing. That's a policy decision that has a whole bunch of ramifications and, and I guess you could say optics issues, which we may want to consider. We're not considering that tonight, but that is an option for us as the school district is potentially exploring teacher housing. That's another option. But I guess, I guess the biggest thing for me is, it's very often that we get at this council opportunities to add to the city's expenses, you know? And just going off, I mean, a couple million dollars here and there to, you know, Petson Need, to Bullware Park, you know, to tree trimming cycles. We can go off a whole list of things that, that we can add to. It's not that very often that we get a chance to pay it down. I think Councilmember Tanaka also made a good argument that, you know, we bought this property at a good time. It seems like a pretty good time to sell. And so I think that's where I'm leaning. But I think I would love to hear from the mayor and then see where we get, but that's kind of where I'm leaning.
Councilmember DuBois, do you have something to add?
Would you want to go first, or?
Well, my instinct is actually the other direction. And I'm going to observe here. So I think that the question is, you know, the question comes down to, I mean, if we're grappling, it comes down to the numbers involved that, you know, it's, you know, at some level of economics, you would go one way and a different level of economics should go the other way, or you would tend to go the other way. I do think I heard two distinctly different things from councilmembers Tanaka and Koo on the subject of selling the, selling the property at 335 Webster. Councilmember Koo proposed, we take the proceeds and invest it in other real estate in Palo Alto. Councilmember Tanaka proposed, we take the proceeds and either save it or, or, or use it for other city purposes or something like that. So I thought those two were quite different. A couple of things, a couple of things stick with me. One is that my understanding is that, subject to legal confirmation, but my understanding is that the charter actually does say the city manager has to live here in town. And so unless we are going to hire city managers in the future who are existing residents, right, then we're going to have to find some way for them to live in town. And so one way or another, we are going to have to have housing as a part of the compensation package for city manager candidates. And so the idea that, you know, maybe we can, maybe we can cook a good deal, right? Each one of these things that comes along, maybe we can time the market and, you know, buy low and sell high and reverse and so forth each time these things come along. Or that, you know, we can, we can pay them less or than it costs or something like that. I, I, I worry that we're kidding ourselves that if we're going to require city managers to live here in town, then we're going to have to pay for them to live in town, and that's, you know, the way it is. And some, and we will adjust those packages. If they live someplace else and want to sell their home, then that'll go into the equation. If they want to keep their home and rent it out, it'll go into the equation. How much do we charge them for the lease and so forth will go into the equation and so forth. But at some level, at some point, we're going to have to have access to property for the city manager to live in, right? And we're going to have to pay market rate for it, right? Unless we're, you know, really, really clever like Donald Trump or something like that. Okay, so that's one. The other thing that strikes me is I continue to believe that in the long run, in the mid peninsula, even now, we underestimate the value of land. And if we sell this property, then it's not free money. What we're doing is selling off city land because we own 2/3 of it at this point, and so we're selling an asset, right? And I'm uncomfortable easily disposing of city assets that we might want to have in the future. So I think we ought to have the house. Now, whether we keep this house, right, and for example, I mean, in the worst case, sell off one of the other properties on Middlefield, right, to fund it, right? Or whether we sell this one and put the money into a different property somewhere, as long as we keep, as long as we don't sell off land, that makes me more comfortable. But this property seems like a reasonable one, right? I live in that neighborhood. It's not the most expensive in town. It's not the least expensive in town, right? But many of these arguments seem to me predicated on the idea that, you know, we can, we can, we can get a good deal on the land by selling and buying and selling at the right time. And I think in the long run, the city's better served on, on owning the parsonage, if that makes sense. About a month ago, I talked to the managing director of one of our local nonprofits and said, "How do you recruit people in town?" He said, he said that we are actually considering investing in a small apartment building for our employees to live in. It's so severe, right? I mean, this, this is a tiny nonprofit. This is the opposite end of the spectrum from Stanford and Google and so forth. So I think, you know, we can say we're going to pay people more, but if we want to live, if we want them to live in town, then we're probably going to have to pay them a lot more. So my inclination would be to, to, to invest and hang on to the asset. Right? Okay. Yes?
Mayor Phil Seth, as to the charter provision that you referred to requiring the, the mayor to reside in the city, there is a legal issue as to the enforceability of that provision. And I think frankly, a number of cities in the face of that, that issue often, as I believe is in the case of the agreement here, is that the, the candidate or the, the employee agrees to, to live in Palo Alto. There's, you know, there will, there's a strong encouragement during the process, but to the extent that you are necessarily kind of relying on the kind of ironclad enforceability of that provision, I thought you should be aware that that, there is a legal issue relating to the enforceability of that.
Interesting. Okay. Tom, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I mean, just starting with that point, and again, I think council felt pretty strongly it was still a good idea to encourage city manager to live in town, you know, and I think it's a good policy to have our city manager kind of experience living in the town that he's managing. that he's managing, or she or he's managing. You know, but Ed already had property, but he was working here, so we had this temporary housing situation, and, you know, he doesn't tend to transition here. But again, as people have said, we're likely going to have to provide some substantial housing assistance for future city managers. And so again, the way I think about it is we could secure a $4 million property, and we already own 2/3 of it. And so for about a maximum $900,000, we would have this $4 million asset outright. We would then lease it, like, nobody would give it away. I didn't really understand Councilmember Tanaka's comments about giving away $220,000. We can charge market rent. I think what we're really doing is offering a recruiting incentive for somebody to live in a house without having to come up with a huge down payment that, you know, for a public service employee is pretty hard to come up with, not to mention private citizens. And we've talked a lot about recruiting and retention, so again, that's what makes me lean towards really considering purchasing this. I'm more comfortable that we can use the property. I think, again, we've talked about how do we compete? What do we do to really attract talent? And I think having this as an option, as an incentive, without having to compete with private companies looking to purchase residences is going to be really important. Fact that it's a two-bedroom, again, I think it can work for people. It depends, you know, people later stage of life, without kids. You know, I was thinking of our city auditor who was commuting from Seattle. A two-bedroom might have worked. So those are some of the thoughts I was having as I was listening to what you guys talked. I think none of this precludes us from developing those properties on Middlefield or looking at even redeveloping this property, remodeling or rebuilding at some point. I think most of the value is still the land, and, you know, again, that's basically the way I'm thinking about it, so.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Sorry, I didn't break that statement there. So I think Adrian actually has a good point about paying it down. We say yes to a lot of things. We have a lot of needs for capital. We're all struggling to figure out where does the money come from. You know, we've raised our utilities quite a bit almost every single year, sometimes double-digit. I think the other advantage of having, of selling a property is that, you know, I think the reality is that people have different needs, right? So some people have kids and they need, you know, the space, maybe a three-bedroom or whatever it might be. Some people, their kids have graduated already, right? They are off to college and they don't need, they're in more of an empty nest, or maybe even be single, right? And so we have this super-expensive property, which, you know, I don't know how many other cities buys their city manager a $4 million house, right? I suspect very few, especially cities of our size. And, you know, to think that this two-bedroom house is going to fit everyone of all the different spectrum of people that we might need in the city in the future, I think it's really, really hard. It's like, it's, I think it'd fit Jim well, given where he was in his career, but maybe in the future, maybe we had a different city manager, maybe not. It may be the kind of wrong kind of property. And, you know, I think the other reality is when we have fairly senior people, especially city managers, you know, we know that Jim would fly back home almost every weekend, right? And we know that, you know, our auditor, who's also fairly senior, she went to Seattle. It's not so much because they don't like Palo Alto, or necessarily they couldn't necessarily afford it, because we're paying them quite a bit, actually. They could definitely afford it. It's more about, they have roots back where they, you know, raised their families, and so it has a lot more to do with that than necessarily, we're not paying our city manager enough, because we are actually paying our city manager and a lot of our top executives quite a bit. So it's not that they can't afford it. It's more that, it's more that these people are fairly senior and they have roots in different places. And maybe they would appreciate more of a kind of executive, you know, maybe more downtown thing. So I think it's really hard to know what's going to fit the different people that we may want to recruit. I think the other thing is, is, you know, cash speaks a lot louder. I think, you know, the equivalent, the equivalent worth of this is roughly $19,000. If it's a $4 million house, roughly $19,000 a month. And if we were to ask our city managers, would you rather have $19,000 a month extra or this house? I think most people would rather take the cash. I think the cash speaks a lot more to people than the property would, especially if the property's not quite for them, right? If they, if they have, let's say, kids, right, they may really want a three-bedroom, because maybe a two-bedroom is just not going to work for them. So I, you know, I understand the idea of trying to hold on to every single property, but I, you know, like, we look at the property we bought, the old Palo Alto Medical Foundation Building, right? How long has it been vacant? Does staff remember? How long has it been vacant so far?
Say that one more time. What lot?
The Palo Alto Medical Foundation Building we bought, the Roth Building, yeah. How much, how long has it been vacant? Two decades? I don't know. It's been vacant for a long time, right?
I actually don't know. We'll venture a guess and say the early 2000s.
Yeah, early 2000s, right. So, I mean, I mean, it's capital we tied up, it's capital we have to deploy for other things. I mean, we, you know, because we have, you know, a purpose more than just trying to maximize our real estate portfolio, we don't necessarily make the best use of our real estate assets. And so I, you know, I think we could use this capital. I'm actually okay with what Councilmembers Koo said, was, you know, deploying the capital for a different property or, you know, for a park. I'm actually not that particular, but I do think that this is kind of a unique property in our portfolio, and I don't think we'll get as much out of it by holding on to it versus redeploying the capital for something else. So I'd like to make the motion that we do Option A.
Option A has been moved by Councilmember Tanaka, seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Care to speak further to your motion? Councilmember Cormac, care to speak to your second?
I would. I wasn't leaning one way or the other when I came in, and I appreciate everyone's comments this evening. If I think about the objective of what this is, the objective was to provide a home for the city manager. That objective has been met. My secondary consideration is usually cost, so I think it's appropriate for us to recognize the gain here. And then something that's not listed here, which is just thinking about flexibility. Palo Alto's a large place, semi-large, it has a variety of neighborhoods, and the current and any future city manager might have preferences for the size of the home and the location. I realize that my colleagues are suggesting we have this in addition to what would likely be another home. I'm not comfortable with that. I guess this is technically a city asset, but it doesn't feel the same to me because it was created for this purpose. It was not chosen by the city, it was chosen by our former city manager. So that's why I will be supporting Option A. I'll just say one final thing. People have talked a lot about funding, which is, you know, item three on the slide, and says the sale proceeds are unrestricted and might be used for the current manager's permanent residence. So am I correct that we are not making any decisions about where that funding would go in the event that we have Option A? Okay, we've heard a lot of ideas, but none of those will be included in the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Fine.
Vice Mayor Fine. Thank you. So I'm trying to work out the difference here between us. I think we may be a little split on this. I'm actually now reevaluating my former position. Two big things stand out to me. One is Mayor Phil Suth's argument about the land value, and they're already 2/3 in. And the other is that we could rebuild this, right? If two bedrooms is not suitable, we could go for another one. If we decide this isn't the right property, or the city manager, future one, does, we could sell it, transfer that basis somewhere else. So that's kind of where I'm leaning now. I mean, we should put this to a vote, but I'll say if this fails, I think the motion I'll be making is that we go with Option A. We reduce as much as possible any time of vacancy so that we do actually obtain the lease payments for it. And the third thing, a challenge to my colleagues on finance, whatever the city outlays for this, I think we should deal with in this year's budget on top of the other gaps we But those are kind of my comments.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, so, you know, it's a time we see a lot of public agencies moving towards securing So if it looks like this was going to pass, I was going to suggest that we would specify the use of the proceeds as an amendment. So we're talking about seeing a gain. We could keep it in reserve for future staff housing needs so that we have this money available. But then, then I think the question is, what do we think will appreciate more, are holding the asset as real estate or holding it in a reserve fund? And I still come back to, I think just holding the property might actually appreciate more than selling the property now and just holding those funds. So, just more thoughts.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So I guess I just want to mention the idea of sunk cost, right? So I understand what Vice Mayor Fine is talking about, but I think the issue is that you have to kind of think about it as a sunk cost, right? So it's, it's whether you buy or sell it, it's actually economically the same thing, although it seems different. It is actually the same thing. So by not selling it, you're basically buying the house, right? And so we have to ask ourselves, would we actually buy this house today for our current city manager? And that's probably no, right? I mean, this was picked out by Jim Keener, our former city manager. You know, I haven't actually asked Ed where he would prefer to live, but I'm not sure he would want to live in exactly that house. Maybe he wants to live downtown. Maybe he wants to live next to City Hall. Who knows, right? Or maybe he wants to live on the outskirts of town. I have no idea, right? So, but I think this is going to change whoever's here in the city.
Can I comment on that one briefly? So Ed has indicated that he would like that house, which is why he's not here tonight.
Oh, okay. Well, anyways, maybe Ed does, but what about the next guy and the guy after him? And so I think...
I see head shaking over there.
I never heard Ed say that.
Sorry, I'm mistaken.
I don't believe he made that declaration.
Yeah, I've never heard him say that. So, but yeah, so I think, I think the flexibility, the optionality, I mean, I could tell you if we're having a hard time getting a city manager, but we say, hey, we're going to pay you extra $20,000 a month, that's pretty motivating, right? That's $228,000 a year, right? That's very motivating. I think the cash would speak much louder than any house. And that's why I think for us, we should take advantage of this and we could use the capital for better things.
Councilmember Koo.
So most of the time, I would totally say build on your real estate portfolio, keep every single piece of real estate that you have, never sell. But in this case, because it is a city asset, I think it needs to be very versatile. The use of it must be very versatile so that it can accommodate more. And that's, and I haven't seen the house, but I suspect that it might be a little bit customized, a little bit too customized for most people, and it's more executive style. So you limit who lives in it and who might want it. So I really think that, you know, the funding from this property, you know, can either do what I had said earlier, build on our properties that the city already has, or even go out and buy two more pieces of property. I mean, there's a lot of opportunities there, but this asset is, limits the use of it and who can actually live there. So it's going to have to be an executive person. It's one person or two persons versus a family versus maybe even a boarding house type of thing for some of our employees who are actually needed online during emergencies and so forth. So I think that we have opportunities and choices, and that's the thing, to provide options and not just limit it. So I'll be supporting Option A.
I'm going to make a comment, I'm going to make a comment and then go to Councilmember Cormac, I think you've relied on, which is, just on the comparison to the Roth Building, I don't think is apt because it's an office building which has been lying vacant, and this house, you know, if, you know, if we don't reach a deal with somebody in the city to do it, we'll lease it out at market rate and we'll get the $19,000 a month. So I think that's not an apt comparison. And I'm not sure sunk cost is a good description, but I think it's an asset and, you know, in one way, they're all assets. Councilmember Cormac.
It is an asset, but it's two bedrooms and it's $4 million, and there are other, you can get homes with larger bedrooms for less money in other places that are... I guess Councilmember Tanaka is calling the outskirts of the city. I'm going to say maybe my neighborhood, right? You know, I'm not saying that's a bargain by any stretch of imagination, but you can definitely get more for less than $4 million in other parts of town. That might or might not be what the current or any future city manager would want. I'm going to repeat that this asset has fulfilled its purpose, right? It has achieved the objective, and we have the ability to recognize a gain, so encourage Vice Mayor Fine to reconsider Option A.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, so then hearing Councilmember Cormac says, and Councilmember Koo, again, there's nothing in this motion to protect this money, so I would offer a friendly amendment that the proceeds are kept in reserve for future staff housing needs.
And I'm sorry, Mayor Phil Suth, I like, I think I need to be heard with respect to going down this road.
Can we do that?
If you look at the agenda, the agenda really is buy or sell, and there's really, it hasn't been agendized for making any decision on what to do with the proceeds. It really is, those are your two options, and if you want to come back to decide what to do with the funds, then you can do that, but it hasn't been agendized for that purpose. Also, I would, I can appreciate the conversation that you're having, but given that one of the options includes selling the property, I would be mindful of not characterizing the property in any way that might affect your ability to sell. So, and so I can appreciate the comments, but I'm not, I think you should just be mindful of that.
Thank you.
So I'll modify that amendment to ask staff to bring back, potentially on consent, the ability to reserve the proceeds in a fund for future housing needs.
So is that something, given that's not on the agenda, we could actually even do?
No.
Okay.
Is the request to put it on for a future meeting for that purpose?
Yeah, direct staff to bring back an item.
That's fine.
And I guess it potentially could be on consent. It's up to them to decide. It could be an actual item. Just bring it back.
Bring it back as an appropriate item.
Councilmember Tanaka, as maker of the motion, do you accept that?
So it's a direct staff return with an agenda item to discuss? Okay, that's fine. I think we should discuss it. That sounds reasonable to me.
To discuss reserving the funds for future staff.
Sure, if it's to discuss, sure.
Councilmember DeBois, do you envision that to include the city manager, or do you... So for example, one scenario might be the city manager, but is that included in employee housing, or you have a broader understanding here?
Yeah, what could include?
So it could all be for the city manager, it could all be for non-city manager, it could be some combination that we would discuss in the future?
Yeah, but it's not just general fund money.
And what I, I'm hearing from staff that the preference from the table here is to perhaps have this brought back as part of the budget conversation.
I think that's appropriate. So send it to finance?
I would recommend that, just to chime in here, just so the finance committee will be going through the budget process in the month of May. They'll have a deep dive on kind of where things are at, both in the general fund as well as the general capital fund, and so they can make some assessment and perhaps make a recommendation to the full council after they've deliberated through the really exhaustive process of going through the budget. So if that's at council's pleasure, but an option to be considered. So if that's at council's pleasure, but an option to be considered.
So, so how does the, how does the amendment read here?
Yep, that's fine.
You guys all okay with it?
As discussion. For discussion instead of as discussion? And would you want a recommendation or just discussion?
That's what it implied.
That would be the council committee's priority.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Wait, wait, sorry. Councilmember DuBois, you okay with this? Is this so...
Yeah, I'd like to comment on it, but it was...
Uh huh. Good, go ahead.
Councilmember Tanaka should go first if he's willing to accept this.
Okay, so this is to discuss it? I think, if, I think it's worthy discussion. It's not saying that we're going to do it. This is discussion.
At finance, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you accept?
Yeah. Just to be nauseatingly clear, you guys, you accept it?
Yes, I accept.
Okay.
Thank you. So two, two quick comments. So first of all, I really hope this isn't our $4 million, one-year savings in one shot. I mean, that's not really the point of kind of fixing our structural financing.
Asset sales not being the mechanism preferred.
Second thing is, we keep focusing on two bedrooms. There's nothing to say this property can't be a three-bedroom property. I don't know that any of us are toward the property, but again, just because it's two bedrooms today doesn't mean it has to be two bedrooms.
It's not two bedrooms and three dens or something like that. Okay, Vice Mayor Fine.
All right. So just a few thoughts here, and I'm just trying to work through kind of like a tree and branch scenario here. If we were to purchase the property, we could then offer it to city manager Jakarta, see what he says. And if he doesn't like it or thinks it's a bad decision for the city, we can still sell it at that point. Versus if we go with option A, it's going to be in the market and it's going to be gone. And I acknowledge what Councilmember Tanaka is saying, that the market does seem to be doing pretty well and it may be changing. I don't think that's a timeline that directly affects this so, so direly. I also do want to note, we're missing one, Councilmember tonight, Councilmember Niss, who has probably lived here the longest in Palo Alto, which may provide some interesting perspective. And then finally, we're throwing out a lot of numbers here about sunk costs, about how much we're going to put in, about what leases we could get. And I generally try not to ask you staff for more information because I think you do a lot of work, but I almost would like to see two, you know, term tables on this, about the two options, you know, what we could expect to outlay or bring in from both options. And that's kind of where I am now. So both on the issue of, I think we're kind of stabbing at numbers in the dark on both sides, and we're missing Councilmember Niss. I'm probably not supportive of this, but as I mentioned, if we do make an alternative, for me, it would be to purchase the property and then, you know, come back to Finance Committee with discussion of how to close that $1 million or $900,000 gap this year to Councilmember DuBois's point about not using this property to solve our structural stuff in one year. That's kind of where I am. Sorry to disappoint.
Yeah, I think, so with that, would you vote on the board, please, on the motion? And that motion fails three to three.
So just something to add for the council real quick before we go through that, just the disposition of property, once it's in the city's hand, there are certain state regulations associated with that. So it's not the same as if Mr. Keane so chose, obviously exercised his option. So we, I don't know the specifics of all of it. We would need to go into it more, but typically as a government organization, you offer it to other government-type agencies first, then they can bid on it, and if, you know, people say no, et cetera. So we would need to do some research into what that would look like if we were to acquire it and then try to dispose of it.
Okay. So, a question of staff. So what happens if we can't pass a motion on this item tonight?
So I'm going to speak 100% out of turn and Terrence is going to look at me real scared. But city manager, former city manager Keane has exercised his option to sell. So it's up to this council to choose to exercise its option to buy instead of allow him to put it on the market.
Right.
So to the extent this council makes no action, then the city manager exercises his right to sell.
And the city simply passes on its option to buy the property?
If we don't take action.
If we don't take action tonight. So default is, it is sold and, right?
Correct.
Okay. Let's see, I think Councilmember Koo or before, Vice Mayor? Question for, question over here?
Yeah, I thought the staff report said that the contracts were silent on timing. I mean, when do we have an opportunity to talk to Jim Keane about, you know, we need a little more time to make a decision? So something in the staff report, I thought, said that, you know...
Right, so on the slide is the clause for the sale of the home. And so at this point, former city manager Keane has exercised his desire to sell, and so it is incumbent on this...
So what is, what is either upon mutual agreement or...
It's any one of the following. It doesn't have to be...
Okay, got it.
Councilmember Koo. Vice Mayor Fine.
Okay. So if we do nothing tonight, it's likely Jim Keane will sell the property and option A will prevail, that it just gets sold. I think, given some of the questions we've raised tonight and that we're missing Councilmember Niss, it would behoove us to do one of two things. One is delaying our decision, which would be no surprise to Jim Keane. But I don't really think that's much of an option. So I'll move the purchase option with the amendment that we ask Finance Committee to examine closing whatever gap there is this year.
I'll second that.
So just speaking to it quickly, it seems like we're split on this, but if we do not purch, if we do not move to purchase it, then the default is that it gets sold. So if we default in this vote, that's what happens. I don't think that's a great way to make a decision on an asset of this value where there are valid policy concerns. Even if we just, you know, decide to buy it tonight and in three months we're selling it again, I'm open to that.
Agreed.
But I think we're, we're kind of in a pickle where we're missing a council member. We don't have as much information as we'd like, and we're under the gun for next month. So I think it behooves us to consummate this and purchase the property, and then we can decide in the next few months what we want to do. And as I said, I think that'll be no surprise to Jim Keane.
I agree, and I'm struck by the concept, the notion that we can change our mind in a couple of months on, if, if we proceed this way, we can change our mind in a couple of months on this. Well, no, actually, we can't change our mind. What we can do is sell it later if, if we choose, right? Or lease it out, right, and so forth. Okay. Seeing no lights on the board, would you vote on... And to no one's surprise, that one fails on a three-three vote. So... So unless there are more motions, then we will close this item with no resolution. The sale will proceed, right? And we'll see... So what if we wanted to revisit this with the full council and with some more information? How would we do that?
You would request for staff to bring this back next week, or perhaps you could continue this item to next week? I don't know what the agendas look like.
But if we continue it, doesn't that mean that, that, you know, Councilmember Niss doesn't get to participate because she hasn't participated tonight?
But I believe you could request that staff bring it back on the next agenda, yes?
Yeah, I mean, we would...
So I will, I will move that, I will move that staff bring this back on the 22nd.
With, with what though? Like, to what end?
Just move it, we continue it to date certain.
Is there, is there...
Yeah. Well, it's more, more financial information and the full council.
But more specifically, what financial information? I mean, the next steps from a financial standpoint would be if you wanted staff to go get an appraisal of the property. So we would need to hire an appraiser, have them come in...
I don't, I don't think we need that. I think we need two basic models. One would be, if we're to purchase this, what's the city's sunk costs in terms of, you know, $20,000, $2,009 in today's dollars? What could we potentially get from a lease? And if we sell it, what would we reasonably expect at market? And what would our costs be on that?
And just to be completely forthcoming, it is just, it's a little bit more than that. If we were to, that's direction, I think, to really look at how the property is used, which is beyond what we're supposed to be doing here tonight. And so also, you know, just a professional comment, we are not a property management firm.
Right.
And so I think there would be financial implications from a resource aspect if we wanted to start to merge into that area. Sonny and his team of two are, are, you know, really stuck on doing kind of city real estate transactions, not property management type work.
Is it simpler if we just continue it?
Our legal counsel is checking that right now.
Continue it to receive that information? Is that the, is that the point of this?
Yeah, well, yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I thought council had several options to continue an item. Can't we just continue it to a date certain?
Yeah, no, he's asking, he's asking what, what extra information do we want?
I thought we could do it just because we, we're, we want to. There are other, but there are other forms of continuing an item. There's a, continue it as the same day, whatever, in Latin.
Right? That's fine, but I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is if, if it's continuing to get the participation of another council member, I think you should have an understanding of whether that council member should, would be able to participate. And also, you know, I, I think the interim director of AST has indicated that we, we have reached that place where you've, you've had an opportunity, the, the, the city manager has already exercised his option. We, you know, at this stage, we are, we're proceeding with a sale and you are, you're kind of riding along at this, at this point. So if, if you want to buy, then this is the opportunity to buy, but inaction takes us to this place where it's, we're, we're in a sell, sale mode.
Okay. Well, when does the city's option to buy expire?
To my knowledge, it's silent on the contract in terms of that, which means, again, that's where we get to the, if no action, then the city manager, the former city manager can proceed.
Can proceed, right.
Their real estate transaction.
Councilmember Koo.
Thank you. So first I have to say, I, I do object that, and I appreciate what Terrence said, that you're trying to continue maybe with the intent of getting another council member here in order to vote.
I'm sitting here thinking I'd like to go...
And so I would be a little bit upset about that.
I'm sitting here thinking I'd like to go look at the place, but go ahead.
But the whole point is, you know, Councilmember Niss is not here. This is agendized for today. We need a decision today. A decision has been made. And it's just highly, you know, to, to a sense that it's almost playing a game. So if this is the case, then we can keep on punting things every time we don't have enough votes, correct? And so I'd really like you to consider that and just ensure that we're doing it the right way.
Councilmember DuBois.
I don't, I don't know, but I guess, Lydia, I would say we're deadlocked, three-three. And the other option we have is to talk it out tonight and see if there's any compromise amongst these positions we have staked out. But continuing the item to a date certain seemed a way to break the deadlock. That's why we have an odd number of council members. I have no idea what Councilmember Niss thinks about this item. So it's not playing a game, it's just we're at a deadlock.
She's absent.
Councilmember Cormac, did you have your light on? No.
So not to try and fix the deadlock, just something for this council to consider. You know, this whole where we're at from a fiscal sustainability standpoint and the recommendation that we solve this gap as part of the Finance Committee meetings in 20, in May, frankly. You know, staff is already struggling to reach that $4 million goal. In addition to that, council has the intent, I know, of wanting to go beyond that. So, you know, we're really, it really begs the question from a prioritization standpoint, how much further we can go. And already we've received quite a bit of feedback from the council in Finance Committee meetings on, you know, sacred cow services not to touch. And so this really, I have to say, it was not easy balancing the budget this year, and this will definitely have impacts.
Vice Mayor Fine.
So I think Councilmember DuBois made a good point that we're deadlocked, and I could certainly vote the other way and just be done with this issue tonight. But I think it's prudent of us to punt for a week, get a little bit of more information on some of the financials. We can include Councilmember Niss, who would be our seventh vote. And furthermore, if the sale proceeds in the next week despite that action, that's what's going to happen, and then you guys win.
I'm not trying to put it like that, but yes. Councilmember Cormac.
So from a procedural standpoint, what is required to continue the motion? Is a majority required? Do we have to vote, we have to vote to, I'm asking the question, right? We have to vote to continue this?
Yes.
Okay. Shall we, shall we vote on your motion?
Let's see. Sure, let's vote on the motion. Oh, seconded. Seconded by Vice Mayor Fine. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, so again, I just want to urge my colleagues, I think we've done really well this year to work together. So we, we came into this, many of us, I came into this without really having an idea. We're now deadlocked. I would urge you to consider supporting this motion. It's why we have, again, an odd number of council members. And I think we're doing damage if we can't find a way to just work this out tonight, either to continue it or to find a way to get four votes, one way or the other. But I would just urge you to think about, think about that.
Seeing no lights, would you vote on the motion, please? And that fails on a three-to-three basis. So... Councilmember DuBois.
All right, so I will go back and have a...
One more motion.
I will remake the very first motion that included the discussion at finance about the proceeds.
I'll second that then. So same as that motion?
So... So that's the, that is Councilmember Tanaka's original motion with Councilmember DuBois's amendment to consider reserving the sale proceeds for future employee... DuBois's amendment to consider reserving the sale proceeds for future employee housing as part of budget deliberations. So this motion sells the house and, or, and requests staff to bring the possibility to the finance committee of using the proceeds for sales as part of an employee housing product, package. Does that make sense? Seeing no lights, would you vote on the motion? And that passes on a four-to-two basis with Councilmembers DuBois, Cormac, Koo, and Tanaka in favor, and Councilmember, and Vice Mayor Fine, and me opposed, and Councilmember Niss absent. All right, we have a decision. Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, we move on to state and federal legislation, legislative updates and actions.
Thank you, members of the council. I just wanted to bring to your attention, we did distribute this afternoon an at-places memo that is titled, "Subject: State-Federal Legislation Update Action Cities' Association of Santa Clara County Position Paper on Housing." Wanted to share with you that the cities association did adopt via its board of directors a position related to housing and specifically state legislation related to housing. The council has been tracking SB 50, among other state bills. The cities association action in this regard is notable. We do have scheduled for the council a May 6 study session with our state legislative advocate, so we'll be distributing that agenda in the normal 11-day in advance time period. And that is it. Oh, I did want to note, since we are tracking SB 50, that the next item or next action related to that bill is scheduled for April 24 with the Senate Committee on Governance and Finance. It did pass out of the Senate Committee on Housing on April 3. So with that, that's an update.
Councilmember Fine.
Just one quick update. Last week, VTA decided to not go forward with many of the changes they had been proposing, so they are not cutting back the 101, 102, or 103. They're maintaining the 22 overnight. They are, however, no longer expanding the 522. So that's going before the May board meeting. Doesn't mean it's a done deal, but for the moment, no changes for Palo Alto's VTA service.
Any other council member comments, questions, or announcements? Seeing no further lights, we are adjourned. Yeah, before we do that, thank you very much. I would like to remark that this, this week is David Carnhand's last week with the city. And I want to congratulate, you're going to be the new city manager of the city of, or, sorry, city clerk, city clerk, city clerk, one, one, not quite yet, right? City clerk for the city of Sunnyvale. So congratulations, it's a good move. We will miss you here. If you change your mind this week, please let us all know and, and, but, but, that's right. On the other hand, the house. So thank you for your, thank you for your years of service to the community, and we're going to miss you, but, but congratulations and best of luck with it.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned.